Okay, it is seven to one. I'd like to call this meeting of the German Township trustees to order. Could we all rise for the collective allegiance, please?
United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation, one common indivisible, never could be challenged as well.
Thank you. Mr. Heesu, could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Dr. Ross here.
Mr. Stowe.
Here.
Mr. Potter.
Here.
All are present.
And just to know, we will have an executive session, but we'll do it at the end of the meeting. So people, if you don't want to stick around. So next is visitor comments, and please, if you have any comments, please come up to the podium and say your name and address before your comments or questions.
Yeah, well, I don't know if it's, uh, my name is Luke Asher. I don't, six two zero zero Little Twin Road. Most of us showed up for the solar proposed on corner of Manning and Little Twin. I don't know that our question is what's the logistics there? Is it about to happen or?
Okay, well, let me kind of, you were at the, how many of you were at the June twenty ninth meeting? Anybody?
No, this is all news to us, so.
Well, tell me, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and read my little presentation from that meeting. It might be good. So to begin my presentation, I'll refer to Article eight, a agricultural district preamble in the German Township zoning resolution. This district has been established to provide for agricultural activity and related uses, and is intended to protect and preserve areas of prime agricultural soils for continued agriculture and agriculturally related uses. So the background, solar facilities in Ohio are grouped into two broad categories. Large scale solar facilities, fifty megawatts or larger, one megawatt equals one million watts, and small scale solar facilities, less than fifty megawatts. Any solar project in Ohio, fifty megawatts or higher, must go through regulations determined by the Ohio Power Siding Board. These regulations are quite extensive, as is the application process, and involve multiple public meetings and meetings by the OPSB before any project can be approved and construction commenced. And as an example of the scope of a large scale solar project, on June fifteenth, twenty twenty three, the Ohio Power Siding Board approved the construction of a three hundred megawatt solar powered electric generates generating facility in Clinton County that involved two thousand four hundred and sixty acres. However, the total project, when you think this include the setbacks was over four thousand acres. So those are how large they can get. Prior to October eleventh, twenty twenty one, with the passage of Senate Bill fifty two, Ohio counties and townships had no authority to regulate solar facilities as they were considered a public utility. Senate Bill fifty two effective ten eleven, twenty twenty one, gives county commissioners the powers to designate restricted areas where large solar and wind facilities cannot locate prohibited construction or limit scope of a specific project outside of the restricted areas. This information is included in Ohio Rise Code three oh three point five eight. House Bill fifty one, five oh one, gives zone townships expressed authority to regulate solar projects under fifty megawatts. As of April sixth, twenty twenty three, zone townships may regulate small solar facilities, and this information is contained in O R C five one nine point two and three. So compared to the extensive regulations involved in sitting large scholar solar projects, small scale facilities only require approval from the zoning department to receive a zoning permit. This is especially a problem if no regulations are currently in place. As a result of this, are townships going to see more small school say of scale facilities being proposed? According to an O S U webinar on five thirty twenty three of townships wish to regulate small solar projects, townships need question whether existing regulations adjust to address current situations. Townships have a rule distinguishing the type of system and treat them accordingly. Townships should determine zoning districts that require permitted or conditionally used designation for small scale projects. Some concerns with solar projects in agricultural areas include losing prime ag soils as well as concerns with creating compaction soil drainage problems, weed loss, loss of pollinator habitats. I asked the monitor moderator a question via email that she answered. In your opinion, should townships place separate regulations regarding residential projects, right, residential solar projects from larger less than fifty megawatt project in order to preserve primary cultural soil? Protecting prime soils is a legitimate use of the zoning authority townships now have. If maintaining agriculture is a priority for the townships, it makes good sense to protect the soils that best support the agricultural production occurring in the township and include restrictions against sightings solar on some or too much of these soils. But basically where we are now, at that meeting, we placed a six month moratorium on any small scale solar facilities. We allow the, the zoning commission to put some regulations in place. If you don't have the regulations in place, you obviously can't regulate. Due to the complexity of the trying to get things rolling, they're not going to be able to finish by the twelve twenty nine deadline. So what we're going to do tonight is extend that deadline six more months to six twenty nine, twenty twenty four. In the interim, basically, the zoning commission is trying to come up with regulations for small scale solar. As Mr. Jacoby here is the president of zoning commission. So as so that the moratorium will remain in place, meaning nothing's going to happen on the property on Little Twin. We, we as anything that the changes of text of the zoning zoning resolution, which is basically zoning Bible, first has to be approved by the zoning commission. And in that process, the zoning commission will actually go to these Montgomery County Planning Commission to tell them this is the changes we want to make specifically as far as small scale solar. Once they get that back from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, then they will make a resolution to to make those changes. Once that is done, then it comes before the trustees, those changes to the zoning resolution, which will include again, small scale solar facility changes. So we as trustees, you know, we can't get too involved as far as what the zoning commission is doing because we're going to be approving what they, they approve. So it's kind of, we have to kind of keep our hands off a little bit. Again, I think that certainly the consensus among the people that do you see is to limit or or not allow the small scale solar facilities. I know Mr. Deaton's sent out some email today. My thing I have different, a problem with that is we can't put on a long term moratorium. It just, it's not how a moratorium works. So it's going to have to be something coming from the zoning commission. That's a little bit to throw at it, but it gives you a little background. So basically, there's nothing happening right now. Nothing can happen. We're going to extend that moratorium for six more months. That will go to six twenty nine, twenty twenty four. By then hopefully we'll have a strong set of of regulations. And what the what the zoning commission has been doing, the Ohio Township Association put out a template for some also basically something you can go by to incorporate into your zoning resolution. So that's kind of what they're going by. The Ohio Township Association hired a group of lawyers to put that together. So that's kind of what, what the stage they are now. Or do you have anything to add to that or? You want to come up and say?
George Jacoby, nine five Harris Road. I just, I had a follow up question. Did you say what the megawatt estimate is for the little?
Or is it, I got it right here, so. There it's a three megawatt solar facility on twenty five acres.
Oh, so well within our.
Well, within under fifty, yes.
Exactly, yeah.
So the project, let me just read that. The project has an estimated value of four point eight six oh million dollars.
And you had a figure of about how many acres that would, three megawatts, I think, did, wasn't it like?
Yeah, most there, it's close to ten acres per megawatt. So thirty megawatts, twenty seven acres, about this, about close.
Plus.
Plus your setbacks.
Infrastructure around.
Infrastructure and setbacks from the, from the road that it has to be. We don't have any regulations as of right.
Yeah.
So that, that is the plan with working with the zoning commission. So when, I hate to put this spot on current, when the zoning committee, the zoning commission was going to have a meeting on November eleventh, they had to reschedule that. I'm not sure when it's going to be rescheduled. That those would probably be the meetings to attend because you could, they're going to be going through line by line as far as what they're trying to do, correct? And that way you can, you can have a direct input and then say, this is, you know, we think this is a good idea. We all think this is a good idea. So it gives them some, some input. Because we're here because of you guys, and you guys will like this. So we need your input to, to, this is, this is going to be the zoning commission's legacy forever. However, this turns out, so whether they like it or not, and somewhat for this, this board too, you know?
And when we had the meeting over the summer, it was a hundred percent. One maybe person, but he just wanted residential. So it was a hundred percent against solar in our township. And, and they know, you were here, I believe, for that meeting. So the zoning commission knows what the thoughts of the community are. It was a hundred percent against anything other than residential. So.
And it's hard to say whether there will be some people, I'm sure there's going to be some people that pay real. It's big money and you know, you're not going to get the money you're going to get from putting a solar arm on your property versus cash running your soybeans, you know? So, yeah.
Oh, it's probably eight hundred people else.
Yeah.
Well, working in the industry also, and I get to.
You want to go ahead and come up to the, come up to the, just our microphone, yes, so.
Well, I was just going to say, working directly in the industry, it's, it's, looks good. And, you know, you know, there's obviously different opinions on the whole thing too, but seeing what it does and how it performs, it isn't as good as everyone thinks. And then you don't, you, the money sounds great, but it's not really doing as well as I think that they are. So. And then there's a lot of batteries involved and all this other stuff that, you know, is just not good for the environment, not good for the soil, and you never get that back. And it's like, what do you do with it when it doesn't work and the clouds and all that stuff is involved? So there's just a lot more to it than just being like, oh, we're just getting free energy off the sun. It doesn't work though. Luckily, I get to see that firsthand and experience that. Not everyone, you just see what good side of it when they're trying to propose it, so. Their concern of ours, so, yeah. Listening to construction traffic and just the dust and dirt and.
Tell people, you know, you may have electricity to run your microwave, but if you don't have the food to put in there, there's.
Yeah.
Not the beefs.
I mean, that's a really good analogy, I think. Yeah.
So that's, that's.
No, I was gonna say that that's helpful information, and at least that gives us some peace of mind for a while, I think.
Are you guys on like the police or the fiscal officer email list? If you're not, maybe, maybe think about giving that to Sean because that way, when, when they do reschedule the next zoning commission meetings, you could send up.
German Township Facebook page.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, if she found us German, German Township on Facebook, that's where.
Thank you for your time. Sir, I didn't catch your name when you.
Luke, Luke Asher.
Luke what?
Luke.
Luke.
Asher, A S H E R.
A S T E R?
A S H E.
A S H E R.
Yeah.
Luke Asher.
Sixty two hundred Little Twin.
Anybody else have any comments you want to bring up? We appreciate you coming. Usually there's a lot of people. Officer, if you want to come up first.
Nickels, seven, six, seven, two, Brum County Line Road. All this regulation is for small scale solar.
Small scale, exactly.
Was to stop the big scale guys from just rolling over the township.
It's, it's.
And just saying, we're going to meet up with Metro Parks, buy off a hundred, two hundred, three hundred acres of land that they bought around their township and just do it without anybody's permission. It is point load acid batteries, all the storage that you need, all the length of wire that is required, all the damage that that does. I've seen large scale solar in California, and let me tell you, it doesn't work. So I'm just curious what's to prevent the Ohio government or the county from just coming in here and steamrolling our little town.
Basically, I say, I think that the big difference is it has to go, those large scale projects have to go through the Ohio Power Siding Board. It's a very big, long process. The first thing they have to do will have is have a public meeting with the, either the townships involved or the, you know, so. And so it, from the get go, you have input versus small scale, you really don't have it, as written. And that, that's how Senate Bill fifty two kind of came about because if you're, anybody followed the Kingwood large scale solar in Green County. And that's still in litigation, actually. So, because they, they want to put a, you know, use up twenty seven, two thousand acres or so for that. And that's why the state came up with that too. So, so yeah, there, there's much more input and, and you can, the public has a much bigger input with the, with the large scale. So that's how it's, they just can't come in and surprise the next day they've got all these.
A lot of scandals involved because there are supposed to be ethical ways to deal with the waste of the, when batteries go and you have to get in. Turns out they were just shipping it off to like New Jersey.
Yeah, there is no real recycling as far as solar panels that that's commercially available. And that, and the large scale, they have to, before they even start, they had to put in a all the performance bond to have money in the bank. So when they do decommission, when it shuts down, they have money to take it all apart. And they can't include any recycle, you know, and any money they would make to try to sell the solar panels because there's really no, no market for them. There may not be a market in thirty years. Anyway, so, so that's again, that's, that's, there's a, a much extra layer of security as far as pullback is. Do it, but it's much harder. Kurt.
I need to.
If you could, that way you show up on the microphone.
You might. Jacoby, one, two, nine, five, five, Harris Road. One of the other that the new legislation is is to empower the counties or the large solar farms over fifty megawatts. That falls, as Mark was saying, falls a completely different path. But what needs to be done is the, if the truly turn on mega farm, people are going to need to communicate their concerns to the county commissioner. Because if they make agreements with, or if they agree to disposal by state companies for solar, which most of them aren't from the state, actually. Then that already starts at in ear township. Townships don't have nearly as much to say about that as the county commission. So, and then it would go to the U C O board, right?
Yeah, the O P S B.
Yes.
Again, but, but even before any, any application to that board, the Ohio Power Siding, they have to have that. So, so.
Did I understanding correct that the, they already commissioners already?
Yeah, so I was going to add, I, I met with Judy Dodge and her assistant a couple of months ago, and I wanted to see if they would make German Township a, a zone that is where large solar farms and wind farms are prohibited. They really weren't interested.
They already approved a farm at Little Richmond and Johnsville, Brookville, Johnsville Road.
Yeah.
What we've heard.
Yeah, they.
And that's. Two hundred and fifty acres up there or something like.
The city had to rezone seventy five acres.
Yeah, but the residents, if they really are concerned about much larger projects, they don't track. Need to get out ahead of it, but they kind of make their, yeah, make the position very clear because otherwise it's going to.
Anyone else? Hey, we will move right along. Fiscal officers report. You guys don't have to stick around. You can, you're just a regular.
Good evening, your journey, everybody. Yep, quite a number of things on my list tonight, so we will start through them. First thing is the minutes from the October tenth. I'll let the crowd leave. Thank you all.
Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it. Keep in touch.
Did you all get some of them?
Jeff dropped off the, yeah, Jeff got that up. Jeff Deaton lived right across from where the post.
I didn't know anything about this except for the anonymous Facebook post, but there's going to be, there's something. I don't, have you been contacted?
No.
I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Caution.
Yeah, I knew nothing.
So it's on the right, another. Be the west side of Littleton.
So they're saying so.
Yeah, well, there is one going, I believe, from our previous meeting going in. I prop, what is that, Manning and Weaver on the Jefferson Township side is already in the process, I guess, so.
This is on the east side of Twin, Alpha Manning.
The, the Weaver farm, what he's talking about another one in Jefferson.
The one in Jefferson, one there.
Yes, east side of Little Twin.
I know who. Henry Farm.
And that's right, yeah, no, no industrial.
So are they applied to do something?
They have not applied yet because of moratoriums and.
They, they have not applied, but they have supposedly signed with the, with the solar farm people. Not that they can do anything, but they have signed a proposal.
Yeah.
But it's probably a good chance the same people that's across the street, we were.
I don't know, yeah.
I don't know either.
Yeah.
The chance.
Right. Ready for me to go forward?
We are.
Okay, we'll start with the minutes from the October tenth. Are there any corrections?
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the ten, ten, twenty three regular meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. I've also given you the October financial reports. The same as you get every month. You have the fund status asked at the end of October. Have the year to date through the end of October, cash summary by fund. You have the month of October, cash summary by fund. You have the October receipts and you have the October payments. And I have really no unusual items I need to report to you. So unless you have any questions, I would like to have a motion to approve the financial reports and authorize the payment of the October bills.
So my question is, the, the balance of the general fund is really nice and high. Is that for any particular reason or just the money that's been brought in from the interest in Star Ohio every month?
Interest is a substantial portion of that increase. I don't know without digging in a little deeper to know how much.
Certainly, our general fund has not been that high.
No.
No, we were.
Probably forever.
It's sixty thousand dollars not too long ago, so.
We had predicted an increase and, and that balance increase from two, two hundred fifty seven thousand at the beginning of the year to three hundred and four thousand is on top of the thirty eight thousand, almost thirty nine thousand that we transferred to other funds out of the general fund.
Yeah.
So without that transfer, it would be another thirty nine thousand above where we are. So as we get into budgeting for next year, we'll want to talk about some of those items. Specifically allocation of salaries, which you sort of took care of with your transfers this year. But perhaps other items too.
I think we've been lucky to get some stuff done with like.
Lots of roof from, from the money that didn't come directly out of our general.
With the general fund, so that's been helpful.
Parking lot was the same way.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, that's something we may, you know, decide to increase the cemetery funds for pay some of the expenses that the, the police departments have.
We have another two years of the water district bills to pay twenty four and all of twenty five back, the loan back to the bank. And we have one more payment from the cemetery that will come to us at some point. And that loan will be paid off by the cemetery.
We may do that in December. We talked about that briefly tonight. If our, if everything works out, maybe we can get that payment done and complete from the cemetery this year. If not, it would be next year, so.
And how much is that payment? Ten thousand?
It's just short of ten, it's not a full ten thousand.
It's nine thousand. They've been very good about keeping regular payments up to the, to the twelve days.
Okey dokey, any other? I'm gonna say, I will, I make a motion to approve the October financial reports and authorize the payment of October bills. Warrants five oh seven oh five, three, six, nine, nine, dash, six, nine, nine through five oh seven, one, two, and vouchers seven, nine, six, through eight, seven, eight for payroll, direct deposit tax withholdings and other electronic payments.
I say I have a typo on the, on the report. It is warrants five, zero, seven, oh, five through five, zero, seven, twelve. That's six ninety nine shouldn't be in there.
Is not applicable. A second.
From last month's report. Okay, we have a first. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone in the township and in the city who voted on one or maybe all three of the township issues at last week's election. The first issue, number four, was the five year renewal of the one mill joint levy we have with the city of Germantown, or, and that's for roads. And that is the only levy that we have, and I believe the city has specifically earmarked to support roads within the township in Germantown. So that money is certainly needed by Mr. Holberg and by the city, and we appreciate the residents of both jurisdictions approving it. Here in the township, issue number five concerned the electric aggregation. And issue number six concerned national, natural gas aggregation. Both of those were passed by our residents in the township only. And so the residents, once we get this going sometime in twenty four, they should see decreases in their utility bills. And in that regard, we're moving, ready to move on to the next step, which will be a public hearing on the plans of operation and governance, of what the aggregation will be for electric and gas. There will be two public hearings, both held on December seventh here at the Township Hall. The first one will be at twelve noon, the other one will be at six P M. And the plans of operation and governance will describe the policies and procedures by which the township will carry out the electric and natural gas aggregation programs, including those policies and procedures relating to rates and customer service. And if anyone has a question about the public hearings, they are welcome to call me at the Township Office, email me, or they can call directly to our consultants, Fray Bell Energy. And that phone number is eight, seven, seven, eight, six, one, two, seven, seven, two. This is close. Will you make sure that those dates, that date is available? December seventh, noon and six P M.
And also, because I have talked to Garrett today on the phone before. There, there needs to be two advertisements in the paper.
I plan to put the first one in, not this week's issue of the Germantown Press, but the following week, and the second one the week after that.
So I don't think we need to make a motion.
No. No, it'll just be a typical.
So basically, it's just kind of paperwork to get that in, in place. Well, the P C O has a lot of requirements. So once that's all done, then once, once he has the two public meetings and he's, Mr. Garrett's going to show up at the, the December eleventh trustee meeting to kind of finalize things. So, so by then, and then basically said, what we're going to do is, is give it a couple of months, see where rates are going before we commit to a certain, certain. That's why he wants to get this done as quickly as possible so that you have some, some lead time rates before the decision. Anyway, so good we got him, got that taken care of today, so he can give.
I think the public has spoken very loud and clear that they would like that here in our township. And I believe most, if not all, of the other jurisdictions around the area that had aggregation on the ballot. And I believe it passed everywhere. Okay, moving on. You know, we did sort of begin talking about budgeting in a few minutes ago. And so looking ahead towards the end of the year, went back to January, when we approved our twenty twenty three appropriations, you did include a four thousand dollar appropriation from the South Trust Fund to make a donation from that fund. And since year end is quickly approaching, if you want to do something about that before year end, we need to be thinking about where that money will go. And then we'll need to get it approved either tonight or in December. And then we'll need to get it approved either tonight or in December.
Wouldn't. Yeah, would you like me to reach out to Julie Smith and see if she can come to the December meeting? Her sunshine in a bag. We don't have to give that whole amount. I know.
Yeah, I think we should go back. If we're gonna give them, I think we should go to two thousand.
That's fine. I, I had asked for that just to have the cushion in case we needed to do more, but I think, um, yeah, two thousand will be fine.
Yeah, cause I don't wanna, you don't wanna delete that fuck.
Nope, nope.
I don't, I don't really think we need to have her here reading the story, so. Uh, I think.
Are you good with two thousand or a thousand?
I'm good with two thousand, which is probably.
Okay.
Want to make that decision tonight? Turn, pass a resolution?
Do you want to do it?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, introduce resolution twenty twenty-three dash.
Um, let me look it up. Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. We donate, uh, two thousand dollars to Sunshine in a Bag from the Fouts Fund.
Second.
Any discussion of the resolution?
Uh, just that they do a great job getting, getting, um, food to kids in need. I believe she just said it the last time she was here. It doesn't come to the school. Originally, they were putting it in the kids' lockers and the kids haven't taken home. They're delivering it straight to their houses now, so.
Um, so we don't get to stick that.
Yeah, exactly. So the kids that need it is, is going straight to where it needs to be. Um, they do a great job. It's, Julie does a fantastic job, um, just overall. Uh, it's a need in the community and, and I'm, I'm happy that this board can, can help out in, in some, in some way.
I remember the number that she told me the last time we talked. I'm thinking a hundred and thirty-five, maybe, students.
Yeah.
Maybe higher than that even.
And just look at the cost to everything going up. It's gotta be. That's gotta be killing their budget to, to get the, that number of kids, the food they need to get out, so. Uh, hopefully this, this two thousand dollar donation, um, will help with that and I know in the past she said that I don't know where they're at financially, but it seems like every time, if they would get low, something would come in right at the right time. So, uh, hopefully this helps them and, and gets them into the new year on the right foot and they can continue um, having a positive impact on our community.
Any further discussion?
I agree.
Now I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-seven is adopted. Thank you very much. Uh, we've got some other resolutions we're gonna do tonight. Uh, every year, um, U S trustees approve the disbursements from the general fund for a December appreciation lunch for township employees. And if you wish to do so again, I've given you the resolution you would use. At twenty-three forty-eight.
I'd like to introduce resolution twenty-three dash forty-eight, a resolution approving expenditures from the general fund for an appreciation lunch for the employees of German Township on a date to be determined by the employees themselves.
Second.
Any discussion of the resolution?
Just so you all three, we all three know, that's gonna end up on a mailer at some point that we're having lavish township dinners.
Pizza.
At a local pizza place. I've seen it firsthand.
Look, there's afterwards, you and I.
I'm not.
Well, he's spending money on, but during his parties.
I've seen it before. I'm just saying.
Mr. Stubbs, will you like to not second it?
No, 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 I am absolutely seconding it, so.
Any discussion for? That's all I'm not. I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
And Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-three forty-eight is adopted. The next resolution deals with you providing authority for the county auditor to advance our real estate taxes in twenty twenty-four prior to the actual collection. If we don't pass this and send it to them, then we don't get, um, we won't get any money until probably May with the, with the February collection and, and November, October for the July collection. So this is something we do every year, and again, I've given you the resolution.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-nine. Uh, author, authorizing the McEmery County Auditor's Office to advance the maximum available amounts of real estate taxes, personal property taxes and fines on a monthly basis during twenty twenty-four.
Second. Any discussion of the resolution? Hearing that, I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, we're gonna talk about the, um, report for just a minute. Uh, last month, you did have resolution twenty twenty-three forty-six to approve a contract with Dry Tech Exteriors to seal the township hall roof with a white Geico Flex silicone coating. And we, we made that resolution at a cost not to exceed thirty thousand. Since the project was a non-budgeted item, the township could pay for this project using American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA funds. However, I had not prepared the standard ARPA resolution prior to the October meeting. So in order to move the project forward quickly, you agreed to approve the project last month using payment from the general fund. I now recommend that you rescind resolution twenty twenty-three forty-six by a roll call vote and then reapprove the project with a new resolution authorizing payment from the ARPA fund. I've given you the draft resolution, which uses the standard template that was provided to all townships by the Ohio Township Association. And I've also reduced the approval amount to the amount of the Dry Tech invoice, which is twenty-four thousand seven thirty-eight thirty-five. I do want to point out that the ARPA resolution uses, utilizes the small purchase federal guideline. And under this category, at least two quotes are required for purchases between ten thousand and two hundred fifty thousand, and the lowest quote must be accepted. Mr. Potter obtained quotes from both Dry Tech and Spartan Roofing and Renovations L L C. Spartan Roofing's proposal was forty-eight thousand, one hundred and three dollars. Obviously, since the lowest quote was accepted, we may use ARPA funds for this roof project. So if we could start with a resolution to, uh, sorry, a motion to rescind resolution twenty twenty-three forty-six.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-six.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
And Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Okay, now I've given you the language for what will be resolution twenty twenty-three fifty. I don't know whether you want to read it. We, we've read it in the past when we did the parking lot. We read it when we did the restroom work a year ago or two years, whatever it's been now. Uh, we did it when, we read it when we did Seagull Road. But the important aspect of it is the very top of page three where it says the project is to seal the township roof with white Geico Flex silicone coating through Dry Tech exteriors. And then item two below that, which has the amount twenty-four thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Again, this is resolution fifty.
Do you have that?
I do not have that.
I don't have.
I did include it in.
Yeah.
That's all. If I like to have mine to look at. Can you just pass it back when you're done? You want to do it again?
We read it.
I don't care.
All right, what number did you say this was? Fifty, the fifty? I'll introduce resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fifty. Uh, of resolution, um.
Just go to the top of page.
Top of page thirty.
And then make sure you, you, you put ARPA in there.
Yeah. So I'll introduce this resolution to use the ARPA funds to seal the township hall roof with white Geico Flex silicone coating through Dry Tech exteriors. Uh, the township elected to use the standard allowance by way of resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen and its presumptions of revenue loss due to the public health emergency and to use the amount authorized herein to fund the government services. Two, the project is hereby authorized and shall be paid for by ARPA funds in the amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. The project described herein serves the objective of the act by providing services traditionally provided by a government. Four, according to the project is in the best interest of the township and deemed a priority for the community. Five, no obligations paid under the authority of this revolution, resolution were incurred prior to March third, twenty twenty-one. Uh, for, being further resolved, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this township concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of the township trustees and all deliberations of the township trustees and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one two one point two two of the Ohio Revised Code.
For a second to the resolution. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have some discussions. Um, Brad contacted me on Friday. Said he had the, the ref to come and do the final inspection on, on the roof. Um, he, they, they was doing that on Friday. I called, I sent a text to him today. Asked him if everything passed and was okay. He said, yes, with one contingency, wood blocks on the roof need slip pads. Should have been done when the initial roof was installed. But we will come back out and install those so that the blocks do not set directly on the coating. So he's gonna come back out and put the slip pads underneath the wood blocks that's holds the pipes.
S line.
S lines and stuff up. Everything is passed. Everything's approved.
Okay.
Uh, what little bit needs to be done, he'll be back out to do that.
So how's it look? Have you been up there?
It's slicker than this one. White, white. It's slick and it. Actually, I told, I told Lou, um, when they were doing it, they took the cap off one of the parapet walls between the buildings and actually ran the coating up over that. Well, you know, they could put the cover back on it, so that was a good opportunity to test a little bit of that stuff and it, it really stuck well. Well, I mean, I was scraping out of a pocket and it didn't work. Lot loose of the rubber, so.
And they, uh, there was some wrinkles that was up there in it and they scraped out all the wrinkles that was on that one side, which was not really in the bit. They just did that to make it better job. So.
Good.
Do you know if they're gonna do this additional work as part of their overall contract or is it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, they're just gonna come down and put these slip.
Will be an additional.
No project. Yes, they're, that's just part of, it's just part of their, what they need to do to make the warranty work.
If there was additional cost, I was going to suggest we just pay that out of the general fund so we don't need to go through the ARPA.
Yeah, yeah. Should be no cost.
Okay.
Cause it's been approved. Except for the slip pads and they will be down to do that.
Any other discussion? I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution twenty twenty-three fifty is adopted. Now, Mr. Potter, uh, as with all ARPA fund projects, the federal guidelines require us to have a contract addendum signed by the contractor. Will you be able to get that accomplished? You can have, you can have that document. And sort of as an aside, Mr. Holberg, could we finally get that from? Uh, you're making a note.
I'm, I'm making a note that I forgot what they called it, but yes, I finally got the signed addendum. So we have the one from parapaving for Seagull and now we have the one for Hauser's for the parking lot, so. I finally.
Thank you. That's good.
Thanks.
We've covered our bases for the next audit.
And I, I forwarded that just now, forwarded to your email, so you can, if you want to print that out and put it with the.
I will.
Bill.
That's it to the paid in. Okay, the next item on my list, um, Burnham and Flower has requested that the township execute a group data sharing agreement with Medical Mutual. I really didn't understand what that was when I received it, so I reached out to them. So this agreement will allow Medical Mutual to send our claims data to Burnham and Flower, our insurance broker. But even more so, we will allow our township employees to have access to the Burnham and Flower Auto Claims Retrieval System, which is called T P A Stream. And those of you on insurance, maybe you know what that is. I don't. Uh, the agreement has to be, has been reviewed by Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Anu Sharma. She does not have any concerns with its content. So I'd simply request tonight that you authorize me to sign the agreement. I've given you the resolution. And we'll make that number fifty-one, I think. Yes, twenty twenty-three fifty-one.
I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-three fifty-one. A resolution authorizing fiscal officer Mark Houston to execute on behalf of term in township a group data sharing agreement with Medical Mutual of Ohio.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
I think this allows Burnham and Flower to collect our receipts directly so they don't hassle us.
Correct.
Every day.
I'm told that if we don't sign this, you'll have to submit them individually.
Yes, and that is it's a job in itself.
Well, and, and trying to sign up for it on your own for the automatic claims thing is a pain in the rear.
So this is very good.
So it's a benefit to our employees all the way around.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, again, talking about budgets and year end and starting next year. For the next couple of weeks, I will provide year-to-date analyses of our spending by account number along with an estimate of total year spending and estimated year-end fund balances. Provide that both to the police department, to the trash department. I'll handle zoning if that's okay. And, um, I'll send, also send it to the road department. So in recent years, we've reviewed those budgets at our year-end special meeting. And last year, we held that meeting on Friday, December thirtieth. You may want to schedule our year-end meeting as well as our twenty twenty-four organizational meeting tonight, or you may want to wait and do that at the December meeting.
So does Friday, twelve, twenty-nine, twenty-three, sad look of pay for the special meeting to, for us?
I'm with that.
Yep. Seven o'clock?
Yep.
As far as the reorg meeting, um, we also kind of have to think about the B Z A and the zoning commission meeting. If they have their meeting on this second, which would be a Tuesday, that which would be the normal day for the zoning commission meeting, January second. But we have our reorganization meeting on the Wednesday, the next day. And it's complex, Hannah, for you, Mark, if you acquire.
I can disquire one week.
So I. So does that sound good with you, Kurt, as far as a reorg? Cause that's your regular meeting date. Your first meeting date would be January second. The reorg meeting.
For the reorg?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's just me. I, I always like to make it a few days after the holidays, but, but sure.
That, that way it's, it's your regular date, so we don't do, hopefully a little bit less confusion. So we'll do like last year, have the B Z A meeting first, their reorg and then, then, because if you want to have regular media, we're getting to discuss. So can we go ahead? Is that okay to set those up then?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Well, to those meetings at seven P M.
Okay.
So.
Sounds like a good plan. Twelve twenty-nine will be our last meeting of the year for the trustees and the reorganization meeting for the uh, trustees will be one, three, twenty-four Wednesday and reorg meeting for the B Z A and zoning commission will be one, two. Those are. We've got a bunch of books.
That'll give me the weekend to our Friday night meeting until Wednesday to finalize any changes that you might want to make into the budgets. But we'll talk next month about some of the details, such as allocations and raise what kind of call call you might want to do. We'll try to get that knocked out at the December meeting. Okay, um, just want to remind everybody that, um, that Montgomery County Township Association Holiday Gala is this Thursday, November sixteenth. I know Mr. Potter's attending. I'm attending. Is anyone else planning on going? You're going?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I think there was about eighty people when I, last time I talked to President George J. Ngodsey.
Okay.
So it should be a nice evening. It's going to be at the Mandalay this year. Price definitely went up. Sorry.
Oh, the price definitely.
It certainly did. I didn't have any input in that. They just told me what the price was going to be. Okay, I think everything else I put on my report deals with items you're going to be dealing with later in the meeting. By either Sergeant Burge or Mrs. Close or you, Dr. Cross. So I'll just leave it at that. I'm going.
Okay, next is the police department report.
Perfect. Month stats, oh, driven by the officers, 5,098 units. Mobile dispatches were 86, cases closed, 82 cases, 11 case follow-ups, two arrests, business checks 356, fake house checks or vacation house checks, whichever you want to call them, 54, and occupied house checks 930. The officers are looking at houses as they drive. We had 10 crashes, 32 traffic stops and 19 citations. I have submitted to the trustees two quotes. The rear entry thing door, starting to rust in a couple of places, the frames rusting from the bottom. One is from Xenia Glass and Lock, their quote, or a new steel door, door, steel door frame, closer hinges, weather strip, threshold, I think that's supposed to be strip. Material and the panic bar, the crossbar, which we don't have on that right now. And this is reusing existing locks is $3,662. And then from Highfield Door Sales, same materials. Also reusing the existing locks is $3,860. I'm not familiar with either company, so I was going to ask Jeremy what he thought about this. But you mentioned Highfield Door.
I just knew they did commercial work. I don't know their work from, I've never used them. I've never seen any of their work. Never seen any of Xenia's work, but, you know, speaking from their, speaking to the representatives from Xenia, it sounded like he knew what he's talking about. Didn't seem like it would be a problem to do. You know, I think as long as we get a reputable company that's going to stand behind their work, then. And both those places.
If we, if we use ARPA money, we have to go with the lower.
The lower. I don't know. It's, it's less than the $10,000 limit, so.
I don't see a reason why you wouldn't.
And I don't know why you wouldn't.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that we go with the lower class.
The only thing that I was going to ask about is the existing locks. I mean, is that, are they old or are they?
They're the Medco locks and.
Medco, they're specially keyed, everybody's key. It's different priorities of locks. So the board of trustees key fits pretty much everything except for like the evidence room.
Well, probably.
Yeah. And then supervisors' keys fit like, you know, your guys' office, the entire building. But my key doesn't fit anything in the police department. His key doesn't fit mine. You know, they're, they specialize keys. It's not like something you can go to Lowe's and have them make you a key. You have to go to Centerville Lock, which is our Medco distributor.
And I guess all I was asking is, is.
If we get new locks, which we do need new locks with the back door, we will have to go to Centerville Lock to have them do it. They don't do doors.
Is there any reason to get new locks, I guess?
That's initially, we'd like, Jeremy and I discussed that they're wore out.
Yeah, because, you know, the officers have to use a key to go in and out. Well, and the road department and Shawna, everybody's just using the key just 300 times a day and.
You don't have a card reader of that door?
That, that might be something to consider too. And we had talked about that with.
They're, they're push buttoned or nothing. It's just key, everything's a key.
Wonder what it would cost to put that.
Well, and I, we had talked, I think, was it me and you or?
We talked.
Yeah, me and you talked to Centerville Lock. I think we should just go ahead and put the wire in there when they put the new door up.
Yes.
That way, if it happens, it's there. If it doesn't happen, it's just going to save somebody a bunch of hassle.
Yeah. Yeah.
Eventually, that's something.
So we'll put the old locks back in there and that gives.
The new wire.
So if you would like to approve that and also use ARPA money, I've given you the same template. I went ahead and said not to exceed 4,000 because I wasn't sure which one, and there might be some ones that might come up. And we can add to this sentence on page three, which supplier we're going to use, which it sounds like it's going to be Xenia Glass and Lock. 52. This will be 52. And I don't think you need to read that whole last page.
Okay.
Whoever's doing it, I think we just introduce the resolution using ARPA money and to replace the, here, whoever's going to do it, I'll read this other sentence and the total that we approved. I've got it right here.
I'll introduce Resolution 2023-52, a resolution to use the ARPA funds from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 to replace the township all rear building entry door and frame with Xenia glass and lock with the, with the quote that is, will be, will fix, not to exceed $4,000.
I'll second it though. Is there a second?
It's like, oh, I didn't hear.
Any discussion of the resolution? During now, I'll call the role, Dr. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
Mr. Potter.
Yes.
Resolution 202352 is adopted.
Something I wanted to bring up, as you may know or you may not remember, we haven't purchased a new cruiser for two years. Need to save some money back for certain things and we haven't replaced them in a couple of years. One thing that I would like to look at for the next cruiser purchase, if we're able to buy one next year, it's the hybrid SUV. One thing that we run into is during hot months, we have to leave the car running because it gets too hot in the car and our computer's malfunction. During cold months, we have to leave them running to heat the interior. Our computer's malfunction if they, oh, so. I just want to run it past you guys and see what your thoughts are on a cruiser that is hybrid cruiser. It's been offered for a few years by Ford. We hadn't purchased one because we were unfamiliar those types of vehicles. The positive is it's their baseline model. So basically, it's 650,000 dollars cheaper to buy hybrid than what we're running. So that would be a benefit. I haven't been able to find many agencies that are running those in a close area. Find out what the maintenance issues are, what outfit costs are. It should be the same as far as outfit, but I just want to get your guys' opinion on the hybrid cruisers. I believe it would save us quite a bit of fuel money. To buy one, see how it works and what kind of maintenance issues have, yeah, I think would be a benefit.
I don't, you know, you're going to save some. I don't know how much because again, the gas engine surges up your battery. So if you're just sitting, it's not really going to make a big difference because the, the amount that, you know, you're looking off the electric for a while until that gets too low, then you're, you're in that engine. It's probably, I, I, it's worthwhile. You're going to save some money. I don't know if you're going to save.
I would definitely study that. See, because I know right now we're in the getting between 12 and 13 months of the gallon.
Be nice to find somebody that has one in their department.
I've been looking.
But, but I mean, maintenance wise, it's the same, you know.
Who they've sold to.
So maintenance wise, it's the same. You still got the oil changes because you have a gas engine.
What's the battery, battery life on those? Because that's going to be the fatal.
Regular hybrids, about 10.
Oh, is that? Do you have a warranty on that or is this just, okay?
The thing I did find out though, on the civilian model, we're filling away with that in 2025. Yeah. They're getting a lot of interest from police departments. I think that's the number one seller for them, police. But I guess the interest.
Catch it somebody. That's be powerful.
It'll have the same engine in it, same engine as one of these that we have now. It'll just be assisted.
Okay, think about it.
Send out more for me.
Thing I want to go over, I thought I heard somebody say earlier, this is the time of year we start seeing lot of deer versus car crashes. It's rut season. So beware, take it slow and watch yourselves because everybody's starting to see them. Out there out. Officers performed our annual state mandated firearm requalification last month. Everyone qualified well on sidearm shotguns and rifers, which we carry all three. Side note, anytime we qualify, we spend between $500 and $800 on ammunition. Just an interesting point. On Saturday morning, November 4th, Germantown Township searched, along with the Beaver Creek Search Team and the Montgomery County Amateur Radio Services and Civilian Crisis Response Team held a search and rescue training at the Metro Parks on Boomer Shine Road. I attended that to observe and see how that went and it went pretty well. They had some issues come up that they were able to work through and hopefully won't come up when we do call them out. So that's the whole purpose of these training sessions and they did a great job. So I just wanted to recognize the even chucks for what they do for our search team and let them know that they're greatly appreciated. And that's all I got.
Thanks, Chief. Road Department report, Jeremy?
Short report this evening. Just to keep you up to date, we're still, Scott and I are still working on the 2023 tree trimming on the township maintained road right away. I think we have all but three roads completed, two roads completed. Two more out today. So we're probably well over 90% complete. So I'm hoping within probably not the next two weeks, but the next week we'll be done with that and ready to put the mower away for the winter. Second item is kind of on, on Lou's report with the new roof. Scott and I replaced all the stained and discolored ceiling tiles. There were quite a few. Men's restroom, zoning office had quite a few, hallway had a couple. The trash office, I think, had one. There's one or two in the chief's office, the PD. Basically, I bring that to your attention is now we're kind of on a fresh slate because a lot of times when we have a roof leak, that's your only indication that we have a leak. It's not bad enough to cause water on the floor, but it is bad enough to cause discoloration. Ceiling tiles. So if anybody sees any of those discolored spots, let me know. And I'll either get with Lou or I'll get with the guy from Dry Tech and file a 42 claim. So. The only other thing I had was it seemed, seems like we've been getting hit pretty hard with tires littered along the road. So just might want to let your officers know if they see a bunch of pickups driving around with tires in the bed. We got 21 off of Rocky Road today. And on his way home, Scott said there was more on Farmington. So.
Well, if there's more than 10 at a time.
Well, somebody dumped 21.
You can't haul more than 10 at a time, so.
So. I already told you about the addendum from Hauser. Got that signed.
Got your email.
Yeah, and that's all I have.
Me, I just want to thank Jeremy for arranging to have a veteran's headstone put on a on my, on my, at Muir Cemetery.
Hold up, yeah.
So how's it, have you got?
It'll be, probably be a while before we get it. I've been in contact with.
Explain a little bit. So I got the email. He wanted to put a headstone on Revolutionary War. So I just said that, yeah, I sent that to Jeremy and he's taking care of it. They were thrilled that they're going to be able to do that.
Yeah, apparently the, somebody was putting the bill for that.
Veterans Administration.
Veteran, Veterans Administration was, was providing the stone for this person. And so they just asked us if we would take delivery, set the stone, basically. And they wanted to know what the cost was. There's any permits. Person's already buried there, so it's not like there's any opening to closing. You know, the, right now the cemetery is closed, burial, but what we're doing is replacing the headstone. So I just want to know there's no permits, there's no fee.
So do we need to pour a foundation then?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm hoping it doesn't show up in the middle of winter because I'll probably tell them, wait, wait till spring to set it.
Yeah. Well, we just did our, we did a pour this week, but we're done until spring. We, we didn't get them all done, but we can't do anymore until spring at the cemetery, so.
Jerry, thanks again, Jeremy, for doing, doing well.
Very nice gentleman, you know.
Zoning Department report, Sean?
Zoning has been slow, hallelujah. We only had two permits in October. New residential construction on Germantown Liberty Road and a pole barn on Stiber. We have a public hearing for BZA case 2023-03B tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Advocate down on Mudlock Road is asking for a variance from the regulation that requires accessory structures to be completely in the rear yard of property. Won't go into too much detail on that, but I can't blame the guy. He's got a crappy yard, so.
Did my, did my son William reach out to you?
He did. Taking care of.
Good. Thank you very much.
Um, we got it covered. No worries. Trash, there was a, there was a little bit of a hiccup with the new online bill pay system. Shortly after bills went out, I, I started getting emails. People were trying to look up their invoice number to pay online and it wasn't working. That invoice could not be found. So I reached out to Iwork and they were like, well, I don't know. This is, this is working at our end. I said, well, yes, I can go in through someone's account and pay, oh, like over the phone. I said, but when outside people are trying to look up their invoice number, nothing is being found. I'm going to find out. Iwork somehow pulled all the wrong invoice numbers and printed them on the bills. So she tells me this and says, we got it fixed now. That doesn't help me. They still have the wrong invoice numbers. So I tried to put out on Facebook and our email lists to tell people what happened that they can contact me to get their actual invoice number because I can jump on their account and look it up. I came back to 27 voicemails one day in the trash office. So what was supposed to be, make everything easier, made it not easier at all. Iwork has assured me this will not be an ongoing problem from here on out. But there have been some successful online payments. Thank God for that. I did scoot the due date back to the 15th to account for people and issues and assured them that they will not get late charges until after the 15th. Two extra weeks was sufficient time for them to get it together and get the payment in one way or another, so.
Last month, we extended the deadline from the 31st to the 8th because of postage problems.
Yes, it has been one thing after another.
Sure. We did a motion, the trustees approved it, so I think they should make a motion tonight
Okay.
to approve it to now, to extend it another week to the 15th.
Okay.
I'd like to make, make a motion to extend the. I'd like to make make a motion to uh extend the trash bill deadline to November fifteen.
Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Um, okay. Next on the agenda, our health insurance is up for renewal once again. Um, Michelle, our rep in Burnham and Flower. Said medical mutuals renewal, which originally they said was going to be an increase of five point nine four percent, which I didn't think was too bad. Um, however, later she came back and stated that they were able to get rate relief and brought us down to the off the increase down to three point nine four. Apparently Jeremy talked to her and he didn't she say that a lot of other companies were going up sixteen seventy? So I was pretty tickled with three point nine four.
We we paid a whole lot more than that.
Yeah, I think a couple of years ago was like seven something.
Double digits.
Yeah.
It's been seventeen.
So I was I was pretty tickled with it, but I know uh last year there were some questions about other providers to see if we could get a better deal. So I asked her to get us some some comparables, which I emailed to you guys. I'm hoping you got them. Um, our rate renewal comes in at about sixteen thousand a month. The comparables that she sent. Were substantially higher. I know one was thirty one thousand a month, one was twenty six thousand a month, one was twenty seven thousand. So I think with the comparables and then only coming back at three point nine four, I think we are our best bet is to stick with medical mutual. I know. All of our employees are very happy with it. Um, so I would like to ask you guys to approve the renewal for medical needs.
I've given you the language for the approval resolution in my report. It's item number thirteen. We'll make that resolution fifty three.
Got it. Like to introduce resolution twenty twenty four, twenty twenty three dash five three. To approve renewing the existing health insurance plan for twenty twenty four with Medica Mutual through Burnham and Flower Insurance.
Second.
Any discussion of the resolution? We'll call the role Dr. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
Mr. Potter.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty three fifty three is adopted.
Thanks, Sean, for doing that.
I'd like to thank Sean also.
Yeah, well, and I thank you guys for for keeping us on a pretty good plan. You know, as someone who uses it, I appreciate it. Appreciate having good insurance.
I think it's the first time we've actually gone out for quotes in the last. Certainly since I've been here.
Yeah.
And I I.
I was shocked. I was shocked that.
We've always been told we. Our grandfathered plan is a lot cheaper. Now we have some proof of that.
Yeah. So. Um, and the last thing I got was a a little bit of an an odd request that came in. Um, and when Sergeant Birch came in for to do the certain thing. Was it Bobby Roebach mentioned to you? Um, we share the trash office with. Gars. Um, and and the cert team has has had an issue with storage issues. And I guess Bobby kind of mentioned to. Sergeant Birch about the possibility of combining, since it's one person in three offices, combining the zoning office and the trash office and allowing them to use trash office. As kind of a Gars cert. Um, combination. Storage, whatever they whatever they're going to do with it. We discussed it. I have no issue with it. I mean, asking me if I would be willing to combine go from three offices to two offices, absolutely. Um, but again, it's something we can't do without you guys' approval or your thoughts.
So what about the trash payment?
That was discussed and my understanding is it's just as an insert in the window, correct?
I think it's been moved before.
It can be moved. We can move the payment drop box to a window in the zoning office. Like I said, I'm fine with it, but it is completely up to you guys. It's kind of your building. So I just reside in it.
Is is it gonna a lot of crap you as far as the zoning office as far as?
Well, and I and I talked to him today. I asked Sergeant Birch, I said, is is there a? I mean, are they going to expect me to move the desks and everything out there? And he said, no. So really. I could take a file cabinet and put the trash stuff in it and be fine, I think. Just do a little reorgan the bookshelves in there and make it work. I was kind of looking at it today, but.
There's not much in there that's actually trash.
Yeah, there's really not much in the trash office.
Right, and I also.
Exactly. And I know.
That's why I told Bobby, I said. It's up to you guys. Second of all, if it doesn't work out, we need to stay back. You'll be kicked out. So.
As long as they understand that.
The only issue I could see in the future is if you're not doing.
Yeah.
The same person's not doing that job.
Yeah.
I mean, only tell him that would be an issue.
Yep.
And like I said, as long as as long as they understand that happens, they're going to have to.
Yeah. I I have no issue with it.
As long as you're good with it, because it's.
Five point. Like I said, swapping offices all the time is kind of it. I'd be happy with one giant office. I'm but.
Do we need do we need them to have them sign something that just that they know that?
Have some lease agreement.
And if something changes.
You could do. I mean, they're currently leasing a corner of that office.
I'm just saying, but.
If you want uh to some kind of agreement, we.
I know that. If for some reason we have two people that.
Have two different people doing French.
Boy, that's that will be the time when.
It'll be the time.
We could, I mean, we could probably draft something up. One of you trustees, or if you really wanted to reach out to Mr. Peterson, if you want something more legal.
No, I don't think it.
I don't think that's necessary. Not with Bobby and even chunks.
Yeah, I don't know that I would make it any pretty specific set. I would just put.
At the discretion.
At the discretion that the board of trustees, they get back for any reason. It'd have to be if we get another person, another employee. Yeah, just make to say, hey, you know, it's up to discretion. Until further notice, you can you're more than welcome to use it for the benefit of the public.
You could probably do the same accomplish the same thing if you wanted with a motion. Authorizing them to use that space with the understanding that at your discretion. They may have to vacate and go elsewhere.
That's that. That's. And you give them a copy of that.
Yeah. Pull out that set of minutes and say, here you go. That will leave.
I'm good with that, too. I'll make a motion to allow Gars to use the trash.
Insert.
Trash, yeah. Gars insert to use the trash office at the discretion of the board.
Um, that can be revoked at any time.
Second.
Should we say something about combining the trash and some offices?
Right.
Also, the trash and zoning offices will be combined into the current zoning office.
This way it'll be in the minutes. Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
That's all I got.
Uh, Mr. Potter.
All right. I got several things going on tonight. Um. Part of the pool goes, not much going on there, of course. At the time of year. Park Board, um. Just sort of going on about the uh um. Um, Christmas in the park, December the ninth. Everybody got that. You did get that put on the. Thank you for doing that. Park budget has been approved with force back and forth. Of course, I think there was they had four city employees that were they wanted to take a portion of their pay. For their salary out of the park budget. Um, we got that down with with Ben and Bergy being the highest. Last January, they planned on taking eighty percent of Ben's salary. Out of the park budget. I insisted that the Ben log his hours and for the year it was only sixty five percent at the end of the year. So that saved a potential part of this stuff. But but like him being assigned to the park, he has been a big help. It's really helped the park in multiple ways of getting stuff done and. It just really is publicly and. This has helped tremendously for the for the park. And the only other employee is Tiffany at ten percent of the upper pay.
Some of the other two were.
Paid enough.
That's got to be. Pretty much the whole levy money, right? See, I think that levy only brings in. What eighty or so?
I think it's over a hundred now.
Oh, is it now?
Yeah. But they were trying to replace eleven hundred something.
And I have. I've got things in the works that is working that direction that will even help us more next year as a. As a uh. Legit way of. Getting that all taken care of. So MMI, um. We got the parking lot gravelled by Shane Deal. He donated his equipment and his time. Uh, he estimated the gravel and the roller rent to be six thousand dollars, but it ended up being five thousand. Uh, so and he so and he donated his other time for that. So there's also been two plaques that will be ordered soon for the MMI, one for Camp Miami and one for the MMI. Judy asked me to come down to the work section after the council meeting to talk about the the plan for next year. Um. Plans getting the two plaques uh next to the flagpole will be put up. In the transition of the parking lot to the sidewalk for people to get the flagpole. Um, highlighting the the building corners, um. And doing trying to do the north half of the walking trail that'll tie into Daniel's Peace Park. And with that, we'll include four memorial along that side. Judy also talked about several problems. Um, she talked about the. Uh, the uh. Bridge. Job. I don't know if you've heard about that or not, but they are expecting planning on spending approximately a a million dollars to rebuild the bridge. Five hundred thousand dollars is coming from a grant with its matching funds. They're expecting to use use three hundred thousand of their park of money. And then two hundred thousand coming out of their general funds, what that's looking at.
Which which bridge?
Over. We're doing a covered bridge for a million dollars.
Yeah, they they've talked about that previously, but yeah.
So also. What I was not aware of completely till that night. But they have. Got some. Smack here. There is a tremendous, a bad erosion problem if you pass that on now. Um, down at Kircher Park. Um. It is eating into the disk. Golf. I don't have enough.
Same.
It is eating. It is eating into the disk golf. Um, really bad. You'll look at the second page. The first page there is what it looked like. Of course, in 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 two thousand. The second page is what it looks like. In twenty nineteen.
Yep.
Um, you'll see there of one, two, and three, and four. Those are the disk golf. That's there now. They have. Three has fell into the creek. And they have replaced them. Where they are now. So so that again, that was in twenty fourteen or thirteen nineteen, I'm sorry. You look at the next page. Page one, you'll see that. Is right on the edge. So if you look at from twenty nineteen where where one is. Probably eroded maybe twenty five feet. Where it is today. Right next to uh the pad that's there. Be lucky if that pad is there next spring. And then in number two, down there at the bottom of the picture of number two, that's the pad there. I know it's just in black and white, but you can see to the to the right up and around that how much that has eroded in there.
Yep.
I have two other pictures here. That I just made copies of. Those are the old disk. Just show them, bring them back. Those are the old disk. Foundations for what are the pads that that are gone down in the creek. Twenty five thirty. Feet out into the creek. There he is. This is standing on head. Two. You can see. How the when the creek comes up, it is eroding. Around there, it's already got a trench. There's probably fifty feet between here and the creek. That if it continues doing what it's doing, that fifty feet is going to ride off. They have, they have been in contact. With, of course, Corps of Engineers. And everybody about trying to fix this problem. Um. Have contacted. An organization called River Rangers. That is supposed to come in. And. Do all the permits that is needed. Deal with all the. Whatever the needs to do to to be able to work in the creek and for the retaining wall in there. Um, the cost was estimated at ninety five thousand dollars. The city council wasn't at all interested in here. But I don't think they realize. So if you look at this, your math. That creek has turned a corner now. Where the water, it's been a glancing blow. Over the years. It has now turned the corner where it is now. Starting to run directly into the bank. And it is going to erode. A lot faster. Now than it has been in the past. And this ninety five thousand is going to turn into a hundred now and then just not take very long. So I would like to propose. This is to me, this is not a city problem. This is a community problem. Um, half of that water is ours. On this side of Mud Lake, we take care of the creek. Our our water is running on their side. That this is a community problem, not a city problem, not a park. I would like to. For at least discuss with the board. Of paying for fifty percent of this ninety percent, ninety five thousand dollars. So that we can. Get them to move. Um. Trying to get something. Done before it's worse than what it is or worse than what we got. I would like to propose of maybe using fifty percent of the fifty thousand of the ARPA money. And the other fifty percent out of our general funds. While we're talking about budgeting. We saved twenty five thousand dollars on. The roof project. Jeremy in the road department, they do a lot around here. Fixing the ceiling tiles and fixing the roofs, that and the other. He was had it in his budget to try to buy a truck in twenty twenty four. But it is out of his reach. He feels because of inflation. For the twenty five thousand dollars that we saved on the rental. ARPA money, I'd like to give to the road department. For purchase of the new truck. Um. And then. What is left of the ARPA money. According to Mark, there's forty thousand dollars that is left. On uh Water District. Uh, twenty thousand dollars that we'll have to do in twenty four and the additional twenty and twenty five. I would like to take another that get the twenty thousand dollars of the ARPA money, pay the twenty five, half of that. Just to get it off the books.
ARPA money can't be used to pay that.
Can be used to pay that.
No, but we can use it for something else.
We can use it for something else.
Yes, and then that money. If we say there.
Say well, there will come out of the general fund.
Yes, absolutely.
So. I'd like to keep that in mind. We're trying to figure out something to get. Get this cloud out from over our head so we don't have to deal with it for another two years.
Yeah. Uh.
I think on the debt part. I think we brought that up back in January and and we're making more interest. From STAR. Then we're paying First National. So I think that's why we we instead of paying it off, we had the opportunity, we had the opportunity to do it.
I understand.
Yeah.
But I'm sure that. It would. First National would also appreciate it.
Yeah, for sure. I I can't wait to get that off our.
But I get that off of our books. And that's why we have the money. Um, and we're using trying to figure out a way to let's get this done. The township has obviously saved a lot of money, obviously from our fund. With the with the uh. Roof getting paid for.
Yeah.
And the parking lot's getting paid for. Just paid things forward, get the thing done. About the. First National Bank.
Yeah.
And just get that black cloud out from over. Well, it's just something to think about.
Yeah, Jake was saying, there's really no reason for us to pay that. No, pay that loan off because we're making.
Well, and they're making the interest to get to. First National is.
Yeah.
It's a little bit.
That's just.
But no, I agree.
Bring it up.
No, for me, I I agree. I I want it gone and off, but financially, it makes more sense for us to keep it and earn that interest.
Understand.
At least while it's high.
Yeah.
Um.
So what's 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 the plan for the Wind Creek restoration?
They're they're going to put a retaining wall.
Right. No, I know what the plan, I mean, but what as far as paying for that, what's your plan again?
I was going to pay for half half of it out of the general, our fifty percent of it. We just want the township pay for fifty. Take that to the city, that they would pay for fifty percent. So the township would pay for fifty percent out of twenty-five percent basically, out of the ARPA. And twenty-five percent out of the general funds. It's not really a park problem. It's affecting the parks.
The uh Army Corps and our experts not here any longer um on Army Corps. But uh I think that they need to be contacted and.
According to these River Rangers, they've done all that. So if it doesn't work through them, then it then we don't have nothing to pay.
Right.
So you know, um, you have a question here.
My only concern is, you know, try, we talked about this earlier today. Putting a little bit of thought into it is. I don't know how. You know, my concern is is the River Rangers comes in and they say that this golf. Woo-hoo, you know, that this golf course is safe. And all of a sudden, that water jams over against Mud Lake and we lose Mud Lake.
Yeah, because you're gonna.
Now, now what kind of. Yeah, I mean, is anybody going to give us a guarantee that their repair isn't going to cause?
I think if you go down there and look at it and look how wide that it is, I mean, there's a big gravel bar that's in there. They're just putting it back to where it was of.
I know, I know. That would be, I'm just stating my concern.
I understand.
I would think that these river experts. Would be able to give you some sort of an idea of.
I think it was.
Something's got to change downstream once you.
Yeah, you you start moving stuff around, it does weird stuff.
It does weird stuff and it's doing really weird stuff right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I mean. Rivers ha- have a mind of their own. They they're going to follow the course that they want to. Our our entire valley down here is filled with sand gravel because over the eons it's gone back and forth. Can't do much to control that. It's going to do what it wants. And it's going this way and then later it'll go this way. If we try to change the course and it hits one of our roads, we're going to have a huge expense.
And the city's not going to fund half of that.
I, you know, if it takes the park land. That's pretty cheap. That is pretty cheap.
Well, I think we're going from one extreme to the other. We're not trying to. Put it back against that. We're just trying to put it where it was. We're not trying to divert it into into the. Into the Mud Lake Bank. It's just putting it back. Where it was or don't make it no worse than what it already is. If it keeps going like it's going, it'll take out basketball courts and everything else.
Yeah.
I'm not really talking, I don't care nothing about this golf. Nothing about that really. I'm just talking about it is going to multiply tremendously. Once it gets around there behind that, that hole.
You're, I mean, it can cut that off. With the flow, but at at some point that like, once you bend that. It's going to bounce, I mean, because it bounces back to the other side once just the natural flow of the water.
It's going to bounce back anyways. So. So if you're here, when it's already doing this.
Right.
It's going to bounce back and then it's going to head.
Alright, right.
There.
Right.
So we're just trying to keep the water going straight.
Got gotcha.
If this is goes down in here like this and it turns. And it starts back out this way, it is going to go into Mud Lake Road.
Right.
At that point.
Yeah.
So this is going to continue to eat even down. If you can, we parked right here. It is not very far.
No, I've been, yeah, I've been down the disc golf course and I've seen the, I've hiked through there. I've seen the pad in the water.
Yes, I, I just, I really think that some experts need to be tried in.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
I don't know who the river paths are or whatever, but um. They, you know, the Corps of Engineers, the state certainly has some resources there.
And yeah, that's.
More of the Corps of Engineers would be your resource.
Yeah.
They should be.
I mean, these are, they they all have to deal with the Corps of Engineers, right? I understand. Nothing's going to be done with that Corps of Engineer or. They have some kind of proposal down there. They already have some kind of proposal. I have not seen it. This is just kind of got sprung on me.
Yeah.
And I had to get with Chip and nobody was in on Friday. He did it today. I am just saying. It's not something that. Are we? Now, next year it could be two hundred thousand dollars.
Why are we not considering removing the sandbar?
We we it is convenient to consider moving the sandbar.
Why is that?
Uh, and they're done that.
Corps of Engineers.
They wouldn't allow that, they would allow.
Allow you to disturb warm stones.
Because I think that has probably a lot to do with why the water is going around the sand.
It's a hundred percent wise.
And I think, I think we need a lot more. I appreciate what you brought, but I think we need a lot more information from from those guys before we can go forward with.
This is a pause. I understand that. I'm just talking about is it. I think we have, the city will move forward more if they realize that they have some help.
Yeah.
Because they're just like this, this is completely out of their budget. Have to come up with a hundred thousand dollars and Mark was down there. They just said, well, we can spend a hundred thousand dollars somewhere else.
Silver Bridge.
Why don't do that before the bridge?
I mean, the idea, if they didn't restore the bridge, they would all be voted out of office because it's a landmark, a downtown landmark. A million dollars, it ought to be a landmark. So that that was the reason they did it because they, their meeting room has a bridge on the wall.
I, I think they got a grant. It's fifty percent. So what so.
Fifty percent still is only five.
Believe me, yes. So would it be? Yeah, would it be advantageous?
From people taking.
Would it be advantageous to get that? Thinking about doing that to a to a meeting to to, it's actually where you, where are you getting your data from?
Sure. So if if we are entertaining the thought of of helping pay for. If we're not going to pay for it, then there's no need to do anything.
I think you need to be real cautious about. Probably need to get approval from. Prosecuting office, can we spend money on property that isn't ours?
ARPA money can be. I don't know beyond that.
I talked to Mark about this the other day. We don't want to give no, we will not be giving any money to the city. We would give it directly to the to the vendor, to the River Rangers or whatever.
Right.
We're just splitting the bill. We're not giving any money to the city.
But because we don't own that.
Yeah, you still don't know.
We don't own the creek, yes.
Deb Cross, seven four 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 South Stiber. But before we give any money, whether it be our hard earned money or ARPA money that was given us. Wouldn't it be advantageous to have the Army Corps of Engineers at least talk to the?
As far as I know, they've already done all that. These people come in in June. And looked at the situation. They've spent from June to September and they proposed a solution. That solution was ninety-five thousand dollars. There are written reports, there's a written report of this, yes, but I've not seen it. They're not seeing, they, but there is one. They already have a proposal of ninety-five thousand dollars to fix this problem. And the and the River Rangers has already done all the permitting, all the Corps of Engineers, all that stuff has already been done. Or what I was told.
Well, I, the only thing I don't understand, if there's an issue and the Army Corps of Engineers knows there's an issue, why is the Army Corps of Engineers just not?
The Corps of Engineers. They don't care where the river goes. We care where the river goes.
I wanted to bring this to some conclusion. If we simply indicated to the city that we're willing to continue to discuss this. Possibility of joint venturing with them, isn't that enough for us to move forward tonight? Yeah, we are willing to continue to talk about it because we want more information.
Yeah. Yeah, and they may say even with, if we only have to pay half, we still can't afford it, so.
That's on them then.
What's on them? Not going to get done.
Well, I. We're not going to resolve anything tonight.
No, no, I just wanted to.
We're willing to continue to talk.
I think you are, if you are all. I'll have to go, I'll try to get one from the city.
Records request from the city would certainly do.
Our logo is out there.
Oh, I was planning on doing that. I just, like I said, this was short term. It was just a.
Or you wouldn't have been there even.
I wouldn't even have been there. I didn't know nothing about it. I just happened to be there. Yeah, and or session had come up. But you know, I again, I don't think this is a city problem or a park problem. This is a community problem here, this creek. Right through our community.
Basically, to kind of wrap things up. Just they will con- continue to consider us.
I think that's. This may be six months or a year we talk through this, who knows?
Yeah, and again, this is.
You're not going to resolve it tonight.
That's correct.
With the way the drought has been, it's not going to be.
Yep.
Big issues for a while.
Okay, that concludes my report.
Mr. Stubbs.
All right, I'll go uh as quick as possible. Uh, starting with the cemetery, um, I'm going to report that Julie Delf resigned this evening. Um, and after she resigned as the fiscal officer.
She resigned?
She resigned. Um. I contacted Bob Roarback and he he, RWR and associates will be taking over the fiscal officer. Uh, role in the interim, uh, at least through the new year until. And then we'll go find a a a permanent one. But he's going to do the year end. Our, well, RWR is going to do the year end and and get us where we need to be. We discussed tonight the difference between a renewal and a replacement levy. Uh, to do this, we've asked Bob, he got, he was just happened to be at Captain Nines or whatever it's called now. Came over to our meeting. So, um. We're going to, he's going to contact the county. We're looking at the difference between a renewal. At the twenty twenty values or replacement at the, I'm sorry, it's twenty, renewal at the twenty twelve. Values, because that's the last time it was. Uh, replaced twenty twelve or a replacement at the twenty twenty. Values. Which would, um. We're we're going to find out the difference and see what we're going to do about putting it on the ballot for the spring. This will not, as far as we understand, the new property value increase goes into effect January first, so this will not. Be on the new because we're filing the paperwork prior. We never got an answer from the county because the county never got an answer from the state. Okay. But you realize you have to submit your final documentation. By December sixteenth, right? December sixteenth? Yes. Yep. So you've got a two-step process you've got to go through. Yes. Did you already do step one tonight? Step one was to ask him to. To certify. Renewal versus replacement. Yes, 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 he's going to do that. Uh, so then that comes up. He, Bob said in the past. Uh, that the township has passed a resolution to give the authority of the of the cemetery. To put the levy on the ballot. But we don't know what we're going to do tonight. We hope to. Um, have a special meeting next week, but I'm going to need a special meeting prior to, well, it'd be either the last week of. November, first week of December. Uh, the city has to do the same thing. So the city's going to pass a resolution. Once we know what we're doing. Um, giving, giving us at the cemetery the authority to put the levy on the ballot. So I will be asking for a special meeting. I don't know the date because we're going to wait and see. The deadline for filing is after our next meeting. Correct. It's the day after. Yes. So technically, we could do it our next meeting. Uh, my meeting, why we could, but then I'd have to schedule a special. So, because I'm at the cemetery before I come here and I need that resolution to take with me to the next. You need our resolution before the cemetery. Correct. Can resolve. Correct. You're correct. So I will be asking for a special meeting. I'll let you know, um, once we get closer and know what we're doing. Uh, we've got a tight deadline. Yeah, yeah. And I don't think it's the sixteenth. I think it's whatever the Tuesday is after our next meeting. Okay, um. Uh, we had talked about just trying for November, but we didn't want to risk. Um, failing it and not and not collecting for a year. So. I think the plan at this time is to do a renewal or a replacement. At the previous, uh, and not get the the new current property values on that, so. You have to wait till November. Because we, we only have one shot.
Four meetings at twelve.
I think that's the deadline.
The twelfth.
Okay. Um. When we were talking about the fire EMS levy, I know we said that Tuesday was, or maybe Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday. Okay. Uh, the rental house, we had to purchase a new refrigerator. Uh, we are. Re- replacing some boards on the front porch and fixing gutters on the house. The renter moved out. Uh, we thought we had someone to move in and they have, they have decided not to. Uh, so we're fixing the porch with Randy King's Construction Company uh for forty-two hundred dollars. Um, on Friday of this week, there will be five students from Valley View volunteering at the cemetery. Um, from nine thirty to two thirty, two thirty, I believe, or nine thirty to two. Um, the the high school uh is doing some type of cu- career. Focus on your future day and we were lucky to get five kids that the. I had asked. The high school, next time they do something like this, let us know at the cemetery. And they did, so they're going to send us five, weather permitting, they're going to be outside. Um. Keith has a plan for the day. Um. We're going to clean some stuff up. He he wants to get on Find a Grave. And have the kids start locating some graves and marking them if they have their cell phones with them. Which they would, I think, like doing, right? They're going to have their cell phones with them, so have them mark, you can GPS point graves. So we're going, he's going to have them uh do some of that. Um, so we're excited to see what happens with that. Um, I think I mentioned before, in the process of purchasing two mowers, they are not. They are not um made yet, so we're waiting on that. It'll be in the spring. I registered for the OT, switching ahead to the OTA. I I went ahead and registered for this year. Cost of everything just keeps going up on everything, doesn't it? So, um, I've registered. I've already booked a hotel for a couple nights. Um. I think it's going to end up costing me, I think I did the math, somewhere around seven hundred dollars for hotel uh parking and uh. They've upped the price of the conference this year to a hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is a little high, I thought. Um. Including on the OTA, while I was on their webs- website, there will be, it seems, a new training opportunity coming soon, so we can. We'll be able to subscribe as a township from what I read. And then any of our employees of the township would have access to the trainings on the website, so. Two hundred and fifty dollar calls. Yep. And then you have access to all that. It's been, you know, that's something they're starting. Yep. Next year.
So yeah, so it's a two hundred and fifty dollar fee, so any 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 one of the members that that uh want to take one of those courses, it would be paid out of that. I don't know how many. I took one course over two years. You guys take any courses from the OTA?
I think it'd be helpful probably for zoning more than.
Yeah, well, it was a zoning course. So I don't, I don't know, two hundred and fifty dollars, because usually they're about thirty dollars apiece. I don't know if it would be worthwhile.
Okay.
The other thing is supposedly, if you don't pay the two hundred and fifty dollars next year, you won't get access to their library, which is. So I I think that, let's let's wait, you can join at any time. You can put that two hundred and fifty dollars in at any time and join it. Let's see what, after the first year, what you can access without it.
Yep.
If you can't access the, your webinars and things like that, then it's worthwhile.
They're raising the price for everything. The membership fees are also going up next.
Really?
Well, I just, I had read that while I was on the website and I wanted to pass that along that we.
Township education subscription.
Yep.
They're charging now. They didn't charge for the anything. Because if you take a lot of courses, if your employees take a lot of courses, it would work out. I don't know if it's going to work out.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, let's just wait and see.
Okay, no, I do, I didn't want to take any actions. I just wanted to make sure we were aware. Um, we already talked about the Christmas uh gala this Thursday. I'll be attending that. Um. Uh, Christmas with Santa will be before our next meeting.
Saturday, December second.
Saturday, December second, so make sure if you're out and about, stop by and see Santa. It's a good time, pancakes and all sorts of. Uh, fun times. Um. The fiber internet. Nine through eleven. The fiber internet is moving. Um, they're getting it installed. I just, I know a couple of my neighbors on Boomer Shine. I know a couple of my neighbors on Boomer Shine already have it installed and they called. And said they're, they're putting it in the house and up and running on the twentieth. So it's being put in, there's, it's, it's, it's coming, so it just seems like they did a lot of work and. But I think they're behind it. I think they're short on employees.
Run the line to my house.
Yeah.
But it's not down the road.
Yeah. Oh, really? Really? So. They're not going down Purple County?
We were told.
Well, they also said they weren't going down Baden and they ended up doing it, so make sure you call and. Call T S C. Um, and we'll put it in word for you too, but they definitely. They, they, I know they got some complaints from people that they weren't gonna run it through on Baden and they ended up finishing the road. So.
They said that Oxford Road was in their second phase and.
T S C.
You have their card.
Handsome communication.
Handsome communication.
For it. Which I can give it to you too in my.
And then I will, are you gonna ask for a executive session or do?
Okay.
Then that concludes my report.
Okay, my report, I attended the Fire EMS Oversight Committee meeting on ten twenty-three, where the budget was approved to eight hundred and seventy-five calls as of ten twenty-three twenty-three. I missed the Senior Oversight Committee due, due to my illness with COVID. Spoke with Chino Aresman and they did get their budget approved. But they, they still are waiting for another quote for a generator and still no news on a possible grant to pay for the generator. I'm gonna go, gonna go ahead and introduce the resolution to extend the moratorium for the small-scale solar facilities.
I'd send that to you.
Yes. So do you have a number on that?
Uh, we're gonna make. Two pages of notes ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. Make that fifty-four.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-four. Resolution to extend a moratorium on small solar facilities for six months. From twelve twenty-nine twenty-three to six twenty-nine twenty-four, German Township Montgomery County. I'm gonna go ahead and read this just because it's kind of important that we have this on the record. Whereas. Uh, revised code section five one nine point two one three confirms power on the Board of Trustees, the Board. The Board of Zoning Appeals with Respect to the Location, Erection, Construction, Reconstruction, Change. Alteration, Maintenance, Removal Use or enlargement of any small solar, small wind farm or small solar facility. Whether publicly or privately owned, for the use of the land for that purpose. Whereas the Board, the staff. And German Township Zoning Commission need more time to review and evaluate the provisions of R C five one nine point two one three. And potentially prepare and implement certain amendments to the German Township zoning resolution. Whereas the Board finds it is in best, best interest of the residents and property owners of German Township Montgomery County to allow time to accomplish those objectives. Now, therefore, it'd be resolved by the Board of Trustees of German Township Montgomery County. That with the exception for small, for single-family home structures or powers generated and used on-site. Board believes it is best interest of township to extend a moratorium on small solar facilities. As those are defined in R C one five one nine point two one three eight two. Will allow more time for the Board, Staff and the Zoning Commission to review and evaluate commission, provisions. Revised Code five one nine point two one three and potentially prepare and implement certain. Amendments to the German Township zoning resolution. Yet further resolved that the Board hereby finds that significant legitimate public interest exists. And that temporary preservation of the status quo by suspending all action regarding small solar facilities. Including but not limited to the construction and or installation of new small solar facilities. And the modification or expansion of existing small solar facilities is necessary to achieve, to achieve the legitimate public interest. Yet further resolved, the Board hereby extends a moratorium on small-scale. Solar facilities for a period of six months from twelve twenty-nine twenty-three. To six twenty-nine twenty-four unless otherwise repealed or amended by the Board. Yet further resolved, the Board finds and determines that all formal actions of this Board concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution. Were taken in an open meeting in the Board and that all deliberations of the Board that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements. Yet further resolved as its resolution shall be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
Sir, a second? Any discussion on the resolution?
So this'll give the zoning commission six more months.
Right, and I think we've seen the, uh, overall. Uh, thoughts of the community, so I think we need to make sure. That we. Our policy.
But again, yeah.
Yeah.
So it was up to them, so. There's been some discussion online concerning cultivators and dispensaries.
We got it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Any more discussion? I'll call the roll, Dr. Crawls. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three fifty-four is adopted.
Thanks, Mark. Um, there's been some discussion online concerning cultivators and dispensers of recreational marijuana, marijuana in the township. And cities since issue two passed. O R C three seven eight oh point two five effective two seven twenty-three, which is coming up. Allows the Board of Township Trustees to adopt a resolution to prohibit or limit the number of cannabis operators. So it's basically the same protections they had before for the medical, medical marijuana, so. We can, we can, you know, anybody thinking about dispensary, we can say no. I think that's gonna happen. It is, people are. I attended the eleven nine twenty twenty-three Valley View School Board meeting. Treasurer reported that there will be one S R O in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. No discussion was made about possibly having two school resource officers in the new building. So that finishes my report. We'd like to, we'd like to go ahead and have the executive session. We move to go into executive session for O R C two one two one point two two G one. To consider the employment of a public employee. I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Houston, may I have a real call, roll call vote?
Give it to you. Mr. Potter.
Mr. Cross? Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
We are in executive session at.
So it's.
Call that eight fifty-seven.
Board will now move into his second session. Board will now move into executive session. Got it. It is nine, what is it?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. I'll be right.
Move to return to our open session. Can I have a second?
Second.
And roll call vote?
I think we, do we do that by roll call or motion?
Uh, we can do it.
I think we did it. I mean. Let me just check your roll.
We can do it by motion.
Motion. Who seconded?
I did.
All in favor of going back to the regular session?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we're back at 9:18. All right, I would like to introduce Resolution 2023-55. A resolution to hire Shane Birch as our full-time chief at step three of the chief's pay, pay scale retroactively to when he took over his interim on October 1st of 2023.
Second.
Any discussion of the resolution?
I'd like to thank Shane, Chief Birch, uh, for all your hard work, uh, the last couple of months, oh, forever, for, for a long time, but especially the last couple of months, getting through this, um, and getting to a position uh, where you can take over this department and lead us forward.
I look forward to seeing what you can do. I look forward to seeing what our, our officers are capable of. And, um, I want to thank you again for your dedication to the township and look forward to having you here for a long time.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
Mr. Potter.
Yes.
It's my pleasure to say that Resolution 2023-55 was adopted. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Is there any old business? Any new business? If not, can I hear a motion to adjourn?
Have the motion to adjourn.
Second. Any opposed? By all in favor?
Aye.
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 We return at 9:21. 9:20.